Program was transcribed for release at this time.
What's the name?
John Hancock.
What's the program?
Pointe Sublime. Pointe Sublime. Presented by the John Hancock Mutual Life Insurance Company. Starring Cliff Arquette and Mel Blanc. Pointe Sublime is written and produced by Robert L. Redd. Pointe Sublime. In a few moments, we'll take you to the adventuresome little town of Pointe Sublime. But first, we'd like you to meet your John Hancock agent, Web Tyler.
Good evening, friends. Say, did you ever try to save money in a piggy bank? Well, it's mighty easy, isn't it, to smash him and go spending everything he's got inside? But you take those few dollars a week you've been slipping into piggy, and put it into a new John Hancock Personal Security Plan, and, well, good things are just bound to come your way. For the John Hancock Mutual Life Insurance Company guarantees your money. Money to help pay off the mortgage on your home, send a son away to college, meet a financial emergency, or even enjoy an extra income when you're older. And what's more, your John Hancock Personal Security Plan safeguards your loved one's future too, if you should no longer be here to support them. And they'd need a sum of money at least equal to your present annual earnings to tide them over that difficult first year or two. So, plan your John Hancock Personal Security Program on the basis of a sum at least that large. It costs less than you probably think, and your friendly John Hancock agent will be glad to explain it to you.
Now for the human story of a fellow named Ben Willet. It is mid-morning in Pointe Sublime, and at Willet's store, Ben is puttering around back in the small post office cage. August moon is just entering.
Mooney, I told you a thousand times, keep out of the post office section. What do you want back here?
Uh, where's the free ink?
Free ink?
Well, sure, can't you always get free ink at a post office? I wanna give my fountain pen a transfusion.
Mooney, it's about time you start getting a little serious about life. It's time-
Yeah, what do I smell back here?
You don't smell anything. Now, as I've said-
I smell something awful back here.
Now, look, I keep this post office clean as a pin. I don't smell anything.
Oh, I bet I know what it is.
Oh, yeah? What?
The dead letters. I caught you on that one.
It's not funny. Mooney, you listen to me. It's time you're taking on a little responsibility. You've got obligations as a citizen of this town.
Well, I try, Mr. Willet, but it's awful hard for me to settle down. Just what can I do?
Mooney, I'll tell you something. Right now, our town is in disgrace and doesn't know it.
It is?
Yeah, and it's not our fault. Last week was National Heart Week. Well, Pointe Sublime didn't participate, did it?
Well, I didn't hear anything about it, gee.
No, and I'm still waiting for those fellows up in Vernon who run things to call and appoint me local rally leader. Huh. Well, it's too late now.
They just overlooked this, huh?
Yeah, I guess they thought we was too small to make much of a contribution. But if I had been appointed, I'd put you to work on that drive, you see?
Oh, boy, I'd like that. Hey, hey, somebody just came in the store out there.
Yeah. I looked through the wicket. Oh, Evelyn Hanover and Howie McBriar. Hello out there! Now, get along, Mooney, get out of the post office. Get, get, get.
I am, I am. You don't have to push me. I'll tell Uncle Sam.
Well, how are you, kid?
Well, I'm fine, Benny, my boy, but I think Evelyn's still put out with me.
Well, it was embarrassing, most embarrassing.
Well, what happened, Evy?
Well, I was only trying to bring my happy future to a decision.
Well, you didn't have to say it in front of the real estate salesman.
Hey, what'd you do, Howie?
You know that new model home they built up on Clark Hill?
Yeah, it opened for public inspection this morning.
Well, I just drove up there and took Evelyn through it.
Oh, now, Evy, I wanted us to go through it together.
Well, I must admit, it was very lovely.
Evelyn loved the modern electric kitchen so much, I simply remarked that if she ever accepts one of my proposals for marriage, I'd buy her the house as a wedding present, and a wood too.
Oh, Evy, that'd be wonderful.
It would not. Hush out, Mooney. Darn you, Howie.
What's the matter, Benny? Evelyn will break down next set me someday, you see.
Yeah, she won't.
Well, we won't talk about it. Ben, did you ever hear why you weren't appointed local chairman of the National Heart Week last week?
Nah, not a word. Those Vernon people make me so mad ignoring our little town like that.
See, Mr. Willet, maybe I can help. Would you grant me a favor?
Yeah, such as what, Mooney?
Well, I wanna go and think.
Well, who cares? Go and think.
But I always think better when I'm running my fingers through the rice bin. Can I, huh?
Oh, anything, any go think, but don't wear out my rice.
No, 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 sir. Oh, boy, isn't it?
Look, Benny, here comes Mike Pagano.
Oh, yeah. And I'm terribly worried about Mike these last few days.
I haven't seen him lately. What's wrong now?
Well, same old thing. Well, he's getting worse. He's getting moody.
You know, Ben, I think Mike's in love with that little Scotch girl who came to town a couple of weeks ago.
Laura McGruder?
Yeah.
Well, I don't know, Howie. All I know is I'd feel sorry for any young fellow like him. No relatives, trying to join the Navy two months ago and getting turned down, and having to just lie around in his trailer because the doctor tells him-
Ben, quiet. He's coming in.
Yeah, yeah. Well, morning, Mike. How's the old sock?
Morning, Miss Hanover, Mr. Willet, Mr. McBriar.
How are you, Mike?
How are you feeling, Mike?
Physically, I feel terrific.
Oh, gee, that's swell.
Pack cigarettes, please, Camilla.
Yeah, 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 sure.
Right now, I'm making one last trip over to see the doc.
Doc Lockhart.
Yeah. Maybe he's wrong about me having a bum heart. Maybe those Navy doctors that turned me down are wrong too. Maybe they're all wrong.
Oh, now, Mike, you have to be patient.
Patient? Oh, look, Miss Hanover, if doing a little honest labor once more is going to kill me, then I'm gonna get a job and die happy.
Oh, Mike, you're talking silly.
I know what we cheer up, Mike.
Oh, yeah?
Sure. Spend it a nice afternoon with your new little girlfriend from Scotland.
Lay off, Mr. McBriar. Say, Mr. Willet?
Yeah.
What goes with Laura McGruder? She's got me half sore.
Why are you mad at Laura?
Well, you know, the last time she was in town from her uncle's farm?
Last Wednesday?
Yeah, last Wednesday. She said, "Now I'm not afraid to introduce Mike to my Uncle Andrew."
Yeah, well-
Did she ever talk to you about being afraid to introduce me to her relatives?
Well, once.
She's ashamed of me, isn't she?
No, Laura isn't ashamed of you.
So you won't tell me either? Well, if the girl's ashamed of me, I know what it is. She's afraid to have her folks find out about me because I'm not working.
Mike, you're building that idea up too big in your mind.
Yeah? Well, maybe I don't blame her. It's asking a lot of a girl and asking a lot of her folks to believe my story that a husky guy like me has a bum heart.
Oh, now, Mike.
I'm getting out of here. I'm going over and see the doc.
Yeah, Mike, please come back here.
And he better be pretty convincing this time, or I'm taking my case in my own hands.
Oh, dear.
Gosh, Benny, did Laura McGruder ever tell you she was afraid to introduce Mike Pagano to her uncle and aunt?
Yeah.
Why?
Well, the McGruders are pretty straight-laced. Laura's afraid her uncle will think Mike's kinda, well, on the rough side.
You mean tough?
No, Mike isn't tough. He's okay. He's a lot older than Laura. Guess Laura's afraid her uncle will make her stop seeing Mike.
Hey, Mr. Willet-
Oh, what, Mooney, what? Did you think of something noble?
Well, it's coming kinda slow, but I did think of something. You know my cousin Joe up at Elmwood?
Hey, I'm glad you mentioned him. Web Tyler was asking me about Joe Lorraine just the other day. Hey, how's your cousin doing since you moved to Elmwood? Is Joe worth the money?
Well, I don't know what he's worth, but he saves fifty dollars every single day of his life.
Joe does?
Uh-huh.
How's he save that much money?
Well, he goes into the city park, and there's a big sign there that says, "Fifty dollars fine for picking flowers," so Joe doesn't pick any.
Honestly.
Yeah. You better go back to the rice bin and think some more.
Yeah, well, don't worry. I'll think of something to do that'll make me responsible for it.
Yeah.
Your phone, Ben?
Yeah, yeah. Well, the morning's starting to jam up on me. Yes, yes, phone, I'm coming. Hello, hello, Ben Willet's store motto, we got everything. Who's at the other end of the cord? Oh, Laura McGruder.
Laura?
What? In a hurry? Yeah. Uh-huh. Yeah, Mike was in the store a little while ago. Your uncle and aunt? Hmm, well, I can try, Laura. All right, Kitty. Yeah, sure. Goodbye, honey.
Was that Laura McGruder?
No, it was Lana Turner. Certainly it was Laura.
Ah, I sure like little Laura.
Oh, Mooney, please.
Yeah, I'll never forget the day she arrived in town and I was at the depot.
Yeah, we knew.
And I asked her if I could carry her bags. And she looked up at me with her soft gray eyes and smiled and said, "Yes, yes, yes, thank you."
Get back your rice bin. Think anything.
Yeah, I am, I am.
Where is Laura, Ben?
Well, call from the farm. Oh, dear Laura and her uncle are coming into town this morning. Laura wants me to arrange to have Mike around the store when they get here. She wants me to introduce Mike to them.
Oh, then she's decided to face the issue.
Yeah. I doggone it, when the phone rang, I thought maybe it was the Vernon County Committee calling to apologize for forgetting to appoint me local chairman.
Too bad Heart Week's over, Benny. If I'd known about it, I'd have contributed a thousand dollars.
Really, Howie?
Sure thing.
Oh, Howie and his money. I was gonna give ten bucks, all I could cut now. May still mail it in.
Oh, Ben, look out the window.
What? Oh, my gosh, Hattie Hirsch.
What's she bringing in that wheelbarrow? A great big thing.
It's painted red, white, and blue.
Yeah, looks like a lemonade stand.
Look at the old girl puffing along. She told me the other day she was dieting. I like nowhere.
Well, Hattie always was a poor loser.
There. She set the wheelbarrow down outside the door.
Yeah, and here comes Hattie Hirsch now.
Hey, no, 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 no. Oh, wait till you see what I've just wheeled up in front of.
What is that thing, Hattie?
It's a booth, and I'm setting it up right here in your store.
Yeah, well, that's all right. What?
Are you going to sell something, Hattie?
Oh, just waiting you here. Come on, all of you outside. I want you to have a closer look.
Come on, Benny.
She's not gonna set up no booth in my store. Step out, Evelyn.
Thank you, ma'am. Now, there you are. See?
Good grief, Ben. The sign on it says, "Give to the American Heart Association."
Now, look here, Hattie Hirsch, you trying to muscle in on my territory.
Your territory? Don't be a dope, Ben. And you see here on both sides, people?
Hattie's photograph. Great big ones.
Why, it says underneath, "Vote for Hattie Hirsch for County Commissioner, March 15th."
You mock my words, I'll beat you, Ben Willet, in the coming elections.
But you can't election here on the sides of a National Heart Week booth.
Why not?
Well, besides, Heart Week's over.
Furthermore, even if it wasn't, Ben Willet was waiting to be appointed local chairman.
You get that booth off my property, Hattie.
I guess you didn't know I went to Vernon ten days ago before the drive and got myself appointed our chairman.
You did? That's why you never heard from us, Benny.
Well, the-
Well, what happened? We thought headquarters forgot us. Well, I had to wait for my booth to be built.
Oh, dear, and I was mad and blaming the Vernon fellows.
And then the photographer in Vernon had to enlarge my pictures. He had to blow them up, you know?
Well, he didn't use enough dynamo. Hattie, I'm ashamed of you. Making an electioneering stunt out what should've been our National Heart Week drive.
Well, I'm going through with it now. You and Howie carry the booth into the store and set it up.
That thing positively does not come into my establishment.
Oh, so you will cooperate with the nation while I wire President Truman in Washington, DC?
Yeah, she would too. Oh, now, Hattie, don't do that.
Will you carry my booth in or not?
Well-
You'll have to, Ben.
Yeah, might as well. Come on, Benny.
And in the meantime, I shall run home and get all the folders and forms they have supplied me with, and I'll be right back to open contributions. So tell your friends. Tell everybody. Tell the citizens. Tell the world. We must all back the cause. Well, then, ta-ta.
I'd like to march on her with a meat cleaver. Ta-ta. Ta-ta.
Oh, all the nerve.
Well, she stole a march on you this time, Benny. Say, Evelyn, shall we be on our way? I'll walk you over to your cottage.
Good. See you later, Ben. I'm sorry about all this.
Yeah, yeah, sure, I'll see you later.
Oh, good morning, Mr. Tyler.
Morning, Miss Hanover. Howie?
How are you, Web?
Hey, what do we have here in this wheelbarrow?
Benny'll tell you all about it, Web, I'll see you around.
All right, Howie, sure. Hey, what is this, Ben?
Never mind.
Hey, you're a little grumpy this fine morning.
Well, it's that Hattie Hirsch always buttoning to things. Last week, I wanted to be local chairman of the American Heart Association Drive. Hattie messed things up. She wants to stay to drive in our town this week herself.
Well, let the old gal go ahead with it.
A week late?
Sure. It's a great cause, Ben. So we're a week late. Even if our town's contribution is small, I'm sure it'll be acceptable to help fight America's greatest killer, heart disease.
Hey, maybe you're right, Web. Run the store. I gotta consider your idea.
All right, let's go.
Careful now. Course, I do know that if I was in charge of the drive, I could get people to back it and contribute more than Hattie can.
Well, I don't doubt that a minute, Ben. But Hattie faced you out this time.
Yeah.
You know, the American Heart Association is doing a marvelous job of public education and research, Ben.
Yeah, I know.
Well, I wanna make a contribution myself. It's sorta like making an investment toward information I might need in the future.
Yeah, well, like saving up for a rainy day, huh?
Yes, in a way, you might figure it that way. I always say that knowledge and money, when you need it, are mighty important to a man. And it's good to plan ahead for those rainy spells.
Yeah, this stretch of fair weather's apt to fool us all into believing it's not gonna rain very much.
You're so right, my friend. And that's when we're likely to dip into our savings until there's practically nothing left.
Well, that happened to me once.
Well, Ben, when a man sets aside a few dollars a week for our new John Hancock Personal Security Plan, then it's a different story.
Well, I can't argue about that, Web.
The money's there, safe and secure, to make his future brighter. Money he can use someday to help pay off a mortgage, send a youngster to college, or guarantee his continued comfort if his earnings should ever be reduced.
Well, it figures.
Also, the friendly John Hancock agent will always be glad to show him how his personal security plan serves as financial protection for those he loves.
Mm-hmm.
If anything should ever happen to him and his family should have to readjust getting along without his support. It's a plan that gives him a twofold guarantee, that's what it is. As life insurance, it safeguards his family's future, or it provides for his own security during the years that lie ahead. And yet, setting aside no more than a few dollars a week enables him to build a real security plan.
You kinda know what you're talking about, don't you, Web?
Well, back at the John Hancock agent, Ben, is eighty-five years of experience in helping millions of Americans make their future more secure.
Web, Web, excuse me, but I just remembered, Hattie'll be back any minute, and I'm in a spot. I gotta carry in that food booth a hurry.
You want me to help you?
No, no, I'll get Mooney. Yeah, Mooney?
Yeah, I know. When he wants hard labor done, he calls me. Well, I got my price.
I pay you a weekly salary.
Yeah, carrying heavy things is extra.
Well, what do you want, kid?
Well, if I help carry in Hattie's booth, can I go back in the post office department and fill my fountain pen with free?
I don't care anything.
Oh, gee, wonderful. Let's go, Willet, to tote that booth.
Excuse us a minute, will you, Web?
Sure, Ben.
Come on, Mr. Willet.
I gotta hold.
Well, you lift too.
I'm lifting.
I'm not an elephant, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, you carry some of it.
Now, part two of Pointe Sublime. It is about an hour later. A somewhat disgruntled Ben Willet stands in his store glowering at Hattie Hirsch's belated red, white, and blue Heart Week booth with her pictures on its sides. Evelyn Hanover and Howie McBriar are trying to placate Ben.
Hey, look at that thing. Look at that thing in my store. A monument to the old windbag who was trying to beat me out in the March 15th election for county commissioner.
Ben, Ben, calm down. Here comes Mike Pagano back from Dr. Lockhart.
Oh, dear.
What time are Laura McGruder and her uncle arriving?
Anytime now, I guess, then more fireworks.
Well, I saw the doc again.
What'd he tell you, Mike?
Oh, the same old stall. Take it easy, nothing to worry about. Say, what's that thing there?
That? It's supposed to be an American Heart Association booth.
Well, how come Mrs. Hirsch's pictures are plastered on the side?
Well, Hattie got herself appointed local chairman of the drive.
Oh, yeah?
Ben, I've just decided something. I think you should go over and have a talk with Dr. Lockhart about Mike's condition.
Me?
Hey, yeah, maybe he'll tell you something he won't tell me.
Well, I shouldn't go right now. I mean, certain people are coming.
Oh, yeah. I've made up my mind. Unless there's some awful good reason the doc can give somebody, I'm gonna take a job in pronto.
I... I guess I better go over and see Doc.
Hey. Say, I just got me a brilliant brainstorm.
Yeah?
When is Mrs. Hirsch going to open up that booth?
Well, she'll be back anytime now.
Yeah? Well, it just comes to me. I figured it all out. I'm gonna fix it so Mike Pagano will have to go to work. I'm gonna make a squeeze play.
What are you talking about, Mike?
I'll be right back, right back. I'm going down to my trailer and get my dough.
Now, Mike, don't you be going along. I want you around the store.
I won't be around the store. Oh, yeah, yeah, sure, sure. I wanna know what the doc tells you.
Well, why is Mike going after his money?
Search me. Say, I gotta rush over to see Doc and get back before Laura and her folks get here.
Well, please hurry, Ben. Oh, look, heavens, here comes Hattie back.
Well, I'm going out the back ways so I won't have to talk to her now. The old windsock law.
Sit down, Ben, sit down. Move those books off the chairs. Sorry things are all cluttered up like this.
Doc, I'm in kind of a hurry. Can you answer the question I asked you about Mike Pagano?
Well, he has a strange case. However, one that's not entirely uncommon after a war.
War's been over two and a half years.
Yes, it's over, but we're into a cycle of so-called inflation and pseudo-good times.
Honest, Doc, I am in a hurry. What about Mike? He's desperate. He's gonna take a job, and if he does with his heart and the condition it's in, he might... well, he might-
Kill himself?
Yeah.
He won't.
What? He can go to work?
Sure.
Oh, now, Doc, you saying that Mike is pulling a fake on us?
Not at all, not at all. Ben, in World War I and in World War II, thousands of soldiers and sailors went to hospitals because they suddenly developed heart ailments. Doctors were baffled. You know what killed those men?
What?
Both times. The signing of the armistice.
Oh.
Their ailment was real and honest, but it was phenomenal.
Well, I don't get it. There's no war now.
Ben, these are days of tension, speed, and anxiety. Look, I'm just a small-town doctor, but I see a lot of people every day. I read and keep up. I go to clinics.
But honest, Doc, I gotta get back to the store. What about Mike?
Well, frankly, Ben, I've been taking some extra time to study Mike. I've watched his reactions to suggestions I've tried to plant in his mind.
Well, is he sick or not?
Well, his improvement has been great. He's not far off now.
Oh, good grief, Doc. Why didn't you tell him?
Well, it wasn't quite time. I didn't want him to get all steamed up and excited and go back and try to join the Navy and maybe get turned down again. No, that'd have been bad for Mike.
Doc, maybe he can do light work now, huh?
Ben, Mike can do some light work. Maybe around town.
Oh, brother, that's the best news I've had for days. Let me get back to my store.
Tell him easy work now, Ben.
Yeah, yeah, sure, sure.
I tell you, Howie McBriar, this booth is now open for business. Will you or will you not contribute to the American Heart Association?
No, Hattie, not unless you take your own photographs off the side.
I will not.
Then I will donate.
Oh, and I won't either.
Oh, Howie, look outside. They're here, the McGruders.
Oh, golly, Ben ought to be here for this.
Oh, Andy McGruder coming. Wait till you see me pin that Scotsman for a contribution.
I hope Mike Pagano doesn't get here before Ben does.
Step in, Laura.
Thank you. Uh, hello, Laura.
Oh, how are you, Miss Hanover? Mr. McBriar?
Laura.
This is my Uncle Andrew. Aunt Madge couldn't come with us. I told them all about you.
How do you do, sir.
Where's Ben Willet?
He'll, uh, he'll be back in a minute. He'll, uh, he'll be back in a minute.
Oh, dear.
Well, Andy McGruder, you're taking a long time to say hello to me.
I didn't see you, Mrs. Hirsch.
Well...
What are you doing standing in that thing? Selling something?
I've been waiting for you. How much do you wanna contribute to the Heart Association?
Well, from the looks of that booth, Mrs. Hirsch, I can't tell whether you're taking contributions for a most worthy cause or soliciting votes for yourself.
Why?
Ah, you see, Hattie?
Well, Miss Hanover, look.
Oh, Mike's coming.
Oh, why does Mr. Willet get here?
Laura, my child, what's wrong?
Well, you see, Uncle Andrew, there are some things I hadn't told you, Aunt Marge.
Okay, Mrs. Hirsch, I went and got my dough.
What?
I said that I wa... Oh, hello, Laura.
Michael.
When did you get to town?
Just now, Michael. Uh, this is my Uncle Andrew.
Oh, yeah? How are you? Say, uh, how much do these contributions cost, Mrs. Hirsch?
Of course, they don't cost anything. It's whatever you wanna give.
Well, now, look, let's talk turkey. I'm ready to spend my wad. I went down to my trailer, I, I dipped into my sock and I got the works. Everything I got, five hundred and forty-seven bucks, see, here you are. That's a deal of money, love. Well, I'm shooting the works, Uncle Andrew.
I don't know what it's all about, but I'm ready to cry for your act in this way, Michael.
I think this young man is wonderful. Give me your money.
Ahah, here you are. All my worldly goods, here you are. Uh, this is my force play, Laura, my shut-out move, kid.
Don't call me kid, Michael. Shame on you. I told you this is my uncle.
Yeah, sure, sure, I know. You didn't want your folks to meet me.
That isn't so now.
Well, I didn't know you had the opportunity to know the young men here in our town, Laura.
Uncle Andrew, I didn't tell you. But the day I arrived in town, I... Oh, thank goodness.
Hey, what's going on? A caucus? Howdy, Andy. Long time no see.
You're looking fine, Ben. Hey, Mr. Willet, I just put myself in hot.
What do you mean, Mike?
He just contributed his total savings to the American Heart Association Fund.
Mr. Willet, I, I don't know what it's all about. Oh, you must stop Michael from doing whatever he's doing.
Well, now, look, Mike, a man's gotta be practical.
Mr. Willet, I'm so practical it hurts. Yes, siree, now I'm broke. But, but I still gotta eat. Well, as far as I know, nobody's dishing out free meals to able-bodied citizens. Now, I gotta go to work. Yes, sir, get a job, eh, little Laura?
I suppose you do, Michael.
Yeah, so maybe a job will kill me, but at least girls won't be ashamed to introduce me to their folks, huh, Laura?
Oh, Michael, you, you don't mean a word you're saying. You're only acting. You're just a show-off.
Oh, am I?
You're only trying to hurt me because I...
Yeah, maybe I am showing off, but honest, I, I didn't mean to hurt you, Laura.
Uncle Andrew, this is Michael Pagano. I like him very much. I hope Mr. Willet could have introduced him to you.
Yeah, well, I was held up seeing a fellow.
How do you do, sir? Did I hear you say you're looking for a job, then? Yeah, sure, but, say, Mr. Willet... Whatever it rains, we do, we're all working against time. Plow on emergency drain ditches about our farms, trying to save our crops that are in. You know, I need a man to drive my tractor. Maybe you don't know that I like Laura a lot. Maybe you wouldn't want me so close, but I must admit Laura's a wise girl and a woman. We'd be poor guardians if we stopped her from making friends.
Oh, I could kiss you, Uncle Andrew.
How about it, man? Will you come to work for me and help me out? Oh, maybe I've been kidding myself, kidding everybody, maybe I can't work. Say, Mr. Willet, did you, did you talk to the doc?
Mike, take the job.
What?
What? Start easy, Mike. Doc said so.
Ahah, oh, brother. Laura, Laura, did you hear that? I'm coming to work for you, Mr. McGruder.
Pagano, here's a receipt for your contribution.
Oh, swell, thanks.
All right, all right. Step right up, my good people, make your contributions. How about it, McBriar?
I told you I do no business with you, Hattie Hirsch.
Nor I. Oh, well, be stopping. What about you, Andy McGruder?
Well, I'd want to be sure my money got to the source intended and didn't end up in some lady's campaign fund.
It just came to me, I got... Y-y-y-ureka.
What's got in you, Mooney?
Well, I ran my fingers through the re, re, rice bin and, and I ran through again and again, and I thought, and I thought, and it finally came to me.
Oh, Mooney, calm down, kid, you're all red in the face.
And my, my opportunity for today has come. I see my obligation as a citizen, a, and I expect, accept my re, re, responsibility, e-even if I get killed for it.
Yeah, yeah, sure, August, but...
Yeah, Mrs. Hirsch, y-you got people sore in you. You're gonna make a flop of our local Ha-Ha Heart Association Drive.
Why, let her have it, baby.
Well, it's not gonna fail. I'm gonna see to it that, that people in this town fork over their money so that Americans can, can fight America's deadliest killer. And this booth will look a lot nicer with the...
You're mooney!
Both of you. He told my picture off the side of the booth.
Sir, you're right, Hattie. Glad you had the nerve to do it, Mooney.
I am too.
What?
Oh, I'm so ashamed of myself. I didn't realize I was making a campaign stall of my contribution booth. Oh, Ben, you take over. Go to work, here, I'll give you twenty dollars.
Oh, swell, Hattie. Yeah, whatever you say, who else, folks?
Well, here's my check for a thousand dollars.
Oh, wonderful, Howie.
Here's my two dollars, then.
Nice giving, Evelyn.
Here's Benjamin, ten bucks.
Oh, now it's rolling in, kids.
And I'm going home. I'm going home and hide. I'm just a horrible fido thing, and I'll hate myself in the morning. Goodbye, folks, I'm so utterly miserable. One of lights fading.
Oh, dear. Poor Hattie, I feel so sorry for...
Well, Mr. McGruder, I'll go down to my trailer and get the few work clothes and lockup, and I'll be with you in fifteen minutes. You wait here, Pagano.
Oh, Michael, I'm so happy.
Yeah, now we're getting somewhere, kid, I mean, Laura.
But it's better...
Yeah, I'll be right back.
Well, Mooney, I'm right proud of you, boy.
Gee, thanks. And, and you know, when I was running my fingers through the re, re, rice bin, I, I thought of another moron story.
Oh, no, not that.
Yeah, well, you see, this moron, he, he kept running around the, the top of a box of Wheaties.
Mooney, I'm telling you, nobody can... Why'd the moron run around the top of the box of Wheaties?
Well, because on the instructions it said, it's the, you tear around the dotted line.
Oh, every baby sugar, dear heart.
Well, what is it, Ben?
Ain't us kids the ones?
Remember, friends, many of your fond hopes for the future can be transformed into actual realities through the new John Hancock Personal Security Plan, which serves the double purpose of providing extra cash or income for you to enjoy later on, and as life insurance, helps provide for your loved ones if your support should be withdrawn. So have a talk with your friendly John Hancock agent. What's the name? John Hancock. Points of Line is written and produced by Robert L. Redd and stars Cliff Arquette and Mel Blank. This is Art Gilmore saying goodnight to you from the thousands of friendly agents of the John Hancock Mutual Life Insurance Company, and suggesting next Monday night at the same time, tune in again to Points of Line. Program was transcribed, this is ABC, the American Broadcasting Company. Eight-thirty at K E C A and K E C A FM, Los Angeles. At John O'Keefe and Merritt, there is now, the gas range you waited for. New automatic model with all the famous extra features. What's the name? John Hancock. What's the program? Points of Line. Points of Line. Presented by the John Hancock Mutual Life Insurance Company. Starring Cliff Arquette and Mel Blank. Points of Line is written and produced by Robert L. Redd. Points of Line. In just a moment, we'll bring you the human story of a fellow named Ben Willet. But first, meet your friendly John Hancock agent. Say, you know, friends, it's a real pleasure to look forward to the day when the mortgage on the home will be paid off, when that youngster enters college or gets married, or when we ourselves can enjoy greater leisure. And life insurance can help make these plans a reality. But still more important are the guarantees that go with such a plan. The guarantee, for example, that if anything happens to you, your loved ones will have money to help them adjust to their new way of life. And you get this sort of two-fold guarantee in the new John Hancock Personal Security Plan. Remember this. Your family would probably need at least as much money as you earn in a year in order to readjust themselves to living without your support. So talk to your friendly John Hancock agent soon, won't you? He'll be glad to show you how the new Personal Security Plan can be fitted to your needs and circumstances. Now for the human story of a fellow named Ben Willet. It is one of those gray days in Points of Line. The mountain tops at the back of town are hidden by low-hanging rain clouds. At Willet's store, a delivery truck with an old-fashioned upright piano is pulling up in front. Truck is driven by August Moon.
Wait, 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 Mr. Willet, here's my, uh, new, uh, new piano. Oh, oh, here he comes now.
How gone you, August Moon, where you been the last three hours of my delivery truck?
Yeah, yeah, no, Mr. Willet, just keep your shirt, your shirt, uh, uh, keep your pants on now.
What are you hauling that big old piano around for?
Well, I bought it up in Vernon this morning for, for eighty-five, eighty, uh, seventy, uh, for sixty bucks. And, uh, I told you the other day I was gonna learn to play piano, remember?
Now, let's get this straight, young man. Ever since you received that fool mail-order correspondent's music course, I told you you couldn't have a piano in my store.
Yeah, but it's gonna rain. You gotta help me unload it and, and bring it in, or else me, me, my ivories will get wet.
Why do you think I sold the piano I had in there for seventeen years? You wouldn't leave it alone.
Aw, please, Mr. Willet, I, I'll let you play my piano once in a while.
No. I don't play good enough to get any fun out of it anymore.
Well, you, you played pretty good that time, uh, before Christmas, when, when we was over there meeting Mrs. Hirsch.
Not hurry, we'll get you nowhere. I'm going back in the store, got a new book I'm reading. The American Past. Hey, hey!
What?
I never noticed that before. When'd that happen? Did you break that window pane up there in that corner section?
Uh, 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 yes, sir.
When?
Yesterday.
How?
Well, I, I was cleaning my slingshot and it went off.
Oh, stop with that stuff, now come on in the store.
Hey, but, but what about my piano?
You'll just have to take it someplace else. I'm sorry. I gotta get back to my new book here. Wonderful reading. The American Past, The History of the United States From Concord to Hiroshima. Hey, oh, look who's coming, Evelyn Hanover and...